Oh, you're talking about acidity. I'm not sure like how your professor taught you this, but there's a, there's a couple of mnemonics to remember, to help you remember how to classify conjugate bases, because that's what you're really looking at is the conjugate base of each acid. Right? So they have y'all did job. What book are y'all using? Klein or Smith? Or do you have any idea what book you're using?
Yeah, I'm not sure what book we're using. I can.
It's okay. It's not, it's not an issue. I just, every book teaches this differently acidity. They all teach it differently. Let me give you a quick rundown right quick and then we're gonna go back to that example. So let's say you have an acid. I'm just gonna put, do a generic acid AH. And I'm going to treat it with a base. Right, B. Right? What happens in an acid-base reaction is the base comes in and attacks that hydrogen with a pair of electrons called proton transfer. I'm sure y'all already. So proton transfer, when that happens, you also have to break the bond between A and H. Right? Whatever that A is, whatever functional group it is that that hydrogen is attached to. Alright, so then you're left over with A minus with a pair of electrons plus H base, right? Whatever the base is. Alright, so when you're talking about acidity and you're not, you don't have any PKA values, what you're looking at is this right here. That's what you have to, that's what you have to investigate. It's called a conjugate base. Right? It's the acid after it loses a proton. You see how it was the acid up here and then down here is the acid minus a proton. So it's called a conjugate base. Alright, so with that being said, if you, there's some rules that you can apply to figure out which conjugate base is better suited to be, to have that negative charge or hold on to that pair of electrons. Right? The way I teach it to my students at Tuskegee is using a mnemonic, H.I.R.S. Uh, or B.S. So these are the characteristics that you're looking for. Right? So hybridization. It might, in your book, it may say REO, A.R.I.O., atom, resonance, induction and orbital. But it's the same, same idea. So hybridization and induction. And then resonance. Uh, electro negativity. And size. I have some videos on this too, by the way. If, uh, when we get off, if y'all want some reinforcement, I have a whole like list of videos that you can watch on this topic. Uh, so hybridization, induction, resonance, electro negativity and size. Right? It can be in any order, but I wrote it, I made the mnemonic up as a word that you could remember. Right? Something that's like a real word. Alright, so all of these factors stabilize. Can, oh, hold up. And all these factors can stabilize a conjugate base. Some, some kind of way depending on what, where the pair of electrons is after you pull off the hydrogen. Alright, are y'all following that? Anybody, everybody alright?
Yes.
I got a tuna sandwich over here again. Stay on now. I need y'all to be. I'm just joking. I do have a tuna sandwich on my bed waiting for me though, but it's, that's not connected to this. Alright, so the conjugate base part, that's what we're thinking about. Anytime you're trying to compare acidity, you wanna, unless you have the PKA values, then you wanna compare the conjugate base. So what we're gonna do is take each one of those compounds and draw the conjugate base of it. So here you have an alkane. Right? And the conjugate base of that would look like this. Well, we're gonna just take off. Oh, that negative is horrible. Hold up. We take off, um, the proton and then make that a negative charge on carbon. Y'all following that? So, and just for the sake of clarity, let's say I use OH, a hydroxyl. To pull it off. So here, boom, boom. It's the same, the mechanism is always happens the same way every time. Alright, so you pull off the proton and then electrons go back to the more electro negative atom. So you got that plus, I'm just gonna write it down here just for continuity, plus H.O.H. Alright? And so then if you, that's your conjugate base. This is what you, this is what you're analyzing. And you're gonna compare that to the conjugate basis for the other compound. So the other one was alkyne, so it looked like this. It's a lot to say a little bit, because when we get to the answer, you're gonna be like, man, that was a lot. A lot of talking for a very simple answer. But it's the concept. If you understand the concept, you can apply it to multiple situations. So that's the conjugate base of the alkyne and then the conjugate base of the alkane would look like this. Take the top one off. Alright, so that's what you're comparing. Anytime you think, talking about acidity and comparing which is the stronger acid and you don't have any numbers, you gotta compare the conjugate basis and you compare them based on these factors that stabilize them. Right? So one of those, so let's make this distinction. Go ahead and get this out of the way. Notice the charge is on carbon in each case. Are y'all following that?
Yes.
So same atom every time. So what I don't have to worry about is size or electro negativity. Well, not directly, because it's on the same atom in each case. So size and electro negativity, I don't worry about. And then induction. Does anybody know what induction is? Can somebody tell me what that is? If not, I'll give you a quick, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, from class, we talked about it's influencing something has without being directly connected to it. Like the influence space.
Yes. So induction happens when you put an electro negative atom close to a charge. Right? Everybody here has seen a dandelion before, right? And how the little petals on the dandelion kind of sit around in a globe shape, like a circular shape. That's how electrons sit around atoms. It's like, it's not identical to that, but they form like a cloud. And so if you can put atom or functional group that's electro negative, close to that electron cloud, it'll, it'll disperse it. It'll make the cloud spread out. And so the charge is not as concentrated on the atom as it would be uh, without that group. So that's what, that's what induction. Induction is like moving electron density. Resonance is the opposite. You actually move, physically moving electrons from one atom to another. But there's no opportunity down here to do resonance on any of these, right? You can't do resonance. So that's out. So the only thing that's left is the hybridization state, because that's what's different about each of these atoms, right? What's the hybridization state of the carbon that's in the triple bond? Anybody?
Um, sp3.
You said sp3?
Yes.
Okay.
3.
Is there?
No, I don't know.
Come on. Yes, you do. It's not sp3. Alright, so let's rule that out. So you've got two more chances.
You said the one in the triple bond?
Yes, the one right here. This carbon right here. What's the hybridization state? It's S something, ain't it? Because you know it's sp something.
So would those electrons account as an attachment?
Yes, that's a group. That's exactly right.
So it has two attachments.
Two attachments, good.
Sp.
Good. See, the way that you can, so here's a rule of thumb about hybridization states. You can, you can do it two ways. You could do it the way you just did it and say how many things are attached to the carbon, or you can look at what, look at the bonds, not the number of bonds, but the bonds itself. If a carbon is in a triple bond, it's automatically gonna be sp-hybridized. Right? If it's in a double bond, it's automatically gonna be sp2-hybridized. If it's in a single, if it's all single bonds, then it's automatically gonna be sp3-hybridized. Right? So that's that. So that's sp. So tell me the next one. Cause you're on the roll.
With me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the next one is a double bond. Um, it has three attachments, therefore it's sp2.
Good. And the last one is what?
One, two, three, four attachments, so it's sp3.
Good. So that last carbon is sp3-hybridized. Now here, here's the thing. Here's what we're comparing. Alright, I know this is a lot for one question, but if you understand it, you can apply it to other questions. So have y'all learned it about hybridization and electro negativity, like the connection between the two? Okay, I'm gonna take that as a not yet. Alright, so here's the, here's the connection. Alright, so you have sp3. I'm gonna zoom in so I can write better. Sp3. Sp2 and then sp, right? Those are your three hybridization states. And then if you look at the sp3, if this is, if we had to say that how much S and how much P was present and we added up to be, everything added up to be 100%.
Oh, okay. I think we did.
Did y'all do that?
Are you gonna separate like S, S plus P plus P equals 100 and you?
Yeah, so this will be 25% S.
Okay.
Right? Because it's 1S and 3P is, that's four parts. So 75% P, 1% S. I mean, 25% S. Follow me?
Yes, sir. I have a quick question. Can you, well, can you go back and repeat what you said about the bonds with the sp orbitals?
What, what do you mean? Like the number of bonds or?
Yeah, I can't say that again.
Yeah, so if, uh, if an atom is in a triple bond, it's gonna be sp-hybridized.
Okay.
If it's in a double bond, it's gonna be sp2-hybridized. If it's all single bonds, it's gonna be sp3-hybridized.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So then you got sp2, which is, if we add it up to be 100, we can round up and say that that's 33% S. And then here sp would be 50% S. So the rule is that as you increase S character, you also increasing, you also increase electro negativity. So increasing S character increases electro negativity. The more electro negative an atom is, the better it's able to hold on to a charge or a pair of electrons. Right? So when we go back up here, which one of these, which one of these, uh, well, let me not ask it that way. When we go back up to the examples for sp, this is what? 50%? That's terrible. Sorry about that. That's 50% S. This would be 33% S and then this would be 25% S. So what that means is that the sp-hybridized carbon is the best suited atom out of all three of these to have a negative charge on. Right? And so what the, and, and take to further that, since it's the best carbon out of these three to hold on to a negative charge, the proton that's attached to it in its acidic form, which is here. Right? Comes off easier. It's more acidic. Because it, because when you make the conjugate base and put the negative charge on carbon, a sp-carbon is better suited to hold a negative charge than a sp2 or sp3, because it's more electro negative due to the fact that it has a higher S character. Alright, so that's, that's the, the long answer to that question.
Okay, so, um, to make this like simpler, can we just determine, um, the sp orbitals and determine, okay, so we find the number of bonds. Once we find the number of bonds, we find the S character. I think that's how you pronounce it.
Mm-hmm.
And we can determine the acidity based off the, um, S char- Okay.
But you, but to understand that, you gotta understand the other, the underlying part, which is S character contributes to the electro negativity. Alright, so if you know that, then it, then it becomes trivial, right? Oh, this is sp versus sp2 versus sp3. More S character, more electro negative, better acid.
Okay, got it.
Did that, who asked that question? Someone else that asked that question? Did they answer it?
Oh, you mean?
Yeah, I think it was someone else who asked it.
Oh, about question five or about?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So is that clear? Is it clearer to you now?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's a lot better.
Okay, alright, cool. Yeah, so the hybridization, one of the things about organic is how everything is connected. Hybridization, electro negativity, acidity, all of that stuff is all connected. It's like eating a bowl of spaghetti. You turn the fork and one part of the bowl, spaghetti noodles move on the other side of the bowl. That's how this stuff works. Everything is connected. And so if you understand some really basic fundamental concepts, we get to the hard stuff, it's not as hard. Because everything always goes back to those fundamental concepts of hybridization, polarity and, uh, acidity and all, everything goes back to those fundamental concepts.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I really understand hybridization. Can it be applied to every single question? Or I'll have to consider the other four?
No, no, it's all case by case. Like, I'll give you an example, right? There's one thing about it. It's, it's hard to generalize because a lot of the acidity examples are gonna be different, right? So let's say I had CH3. Oh, before I do that up here, just as a rule of thumb, if, for alkenes, the PKA of that proton is about 25.
We haven't done PKA yet.
Yeah. Oh, really?
No, not yet.
Oh, that's weird. Okay, um, but yeah, that, that, alcon PK 25, alkyne is about 45, and alkane is about 60. So those numbers, like, as a, just a, a rough introduction to that, the lower the number, the more acidic the proton is. So you'll have a head start on your classmates when y'all do start studying PKA. Uh, but let me give you an example. So like, an example like this, CH3OH and you're comparing it to CH3SH, right? And you're looking at this proton as the acidic proton. Well, the conjugate base looks like this. Because that's, you're always comparing the conjugate base. So that's that. And then conjugate base, this one will look like this. Right? So when you're comparing now, you have your five factors. Right? Hybridization, they both sp3, right? They got three lone pairs and then one carbon. So they are both got four groups around it. So they're both sp3. There's nothing, no functional groups close by, so there's no induction. You can't do resonance. So now it's between these two, electro negativity and size. Right? Now oxygen is more electro negative than sulfur based on the periodic trend, right? Because it's left to right and then bottom to top. So oxygen is above sulfur on the periodic table. So it's more electro negative, but sulfur is bigger. And when you're comparing size to electro negativity, size is, is a better factor, because the charge is more diffuse. It's like if you put the, put the, uh, the charge on a marble versus a basketball. You follow me? You got a negative charge on a basketball, that, that negative charge can be anywhere on there, but on a marble is more concentrated. So the bigger the atom, the more diffuse the charge is. Right? So sulfur, in this case, this is gonna be a better acid. And let me just say more acidic. Alright, because, so you can't, it's not always just one thing. Sometimes it's, it's more than one thing.
So to get this right, um, the larger the size, the more acidic it is?
In, in this case, yes, because it's not the, so the size what you're comparing, you're looking at, you're always looking at the conjugate base, right? Do you get that part?
Yes, I get that.
Well, the conjugate basis that you're comparing, and then atom in the conjugate base where the charge is or where the electrons end up when you pull off hydrogen, that's what you're looking at.
Okay, I get you. Yeah, I got that.
Yeah, so the oxygen and sulfur, you're comparing those two. And you're saying, now here's the thing. The, the question you're always asking is which conjugate base is more stable? Right? We talk about some being more stable, especially if it's charged. We're thinking about how can we delocalize that charge? In other words, how can we spread it out? If we can't do, we can't use resonance, we can't use electro negativity, we can't use induction. We're always trying to, this is a bad word, but I'm, I'll say it. Like you have something that's concentrated, you always want to dilute the charge. And I just don't use that as a technical term, because that's, that's two different areas that we're mixing up. But you want the charge to be more diluted. You don't want it to be concentrated. So if the charge is on a big atom, then it's more spread out. So it's more diluted, which means it's more stable. Right? And then same thing, if it's on a smaller atom, it's more concentrated, so there's less stable. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Alright. But you, but the key to understanding that acidity part is to, is to, when you asked about acidity, you immediately should start thinking about, okay, what does the conjugate base of this acid look like? And can I do something to stabilize the charge? Right? If you look up, um, let me, let me just do another quick example. You do like, uh, HI versus HBR, right? Something like that, right? The conjugate base of this one is I minus with four lone pairs around it. And the conjugate base of this one is BR minus with four lone pairs around it. Right? So now you start asking, which one of those is more stable? Is it bromine or is it iodine? Even though bromine is more electro negative than iodine, iodine is a bigger atom. So again, it's like that negative charge being on a beach ball versus a basketball. Right? If you think about the, the negative charge like, uh, uh, I mean, I say it like that. So I put, if I put this negative charge here, it's got a whole lot more room to spread out as opposed to putting it here, right? So a bigger, bigger atom's always gonna be more stabilized. Alright, any questions about that? So how did, when y'all were doing acidity in class, how did y'all learn it? Like what was the strategy from the professor? Did he do like REO? Did he do some other kind of mnemonic to help you understand what you're looking for in the conjugate base or no?
No, he just gave us.
He just started talking.
I'm gonna go with no.
Yeah, you got it. When you're talking about acidity, it's a, it's such a broad topic. You gotta bring it to a point where people can get like, have a nugget to hold on to as a foundation. So from this point forward, what you should be thinking about when you're talking about acidity is what does the conjugate base look like? What does that acid look like when I rip that proton off? And leave that pair of electrons back? Because again, that acidic proton is always gonna be bonded to some atom. So that atom that is bonded to, on the other side of the arrow, that's the atom that's gonna have, uh, the charge and it's gonna be stabilized by something. Now, this is, that's what we're studying right now, actually, uh, in my class. We're studying PK. And so y'all haven't talked about PKA, but y'all talking about acidity?
He hasn't really gone with PK. He just says it like PKA, PK and I'd be so lost. I don't know what he's talking about.
Yeah, so, so you really can't discuss acidity without talking about the PK. You, I mean, you can, obviously with the examples that were there. But the PKA part is like kind of fundamental to understanding acidity. I don't know why, I can't talk about him though. I can't judge him, because I don't know. Like, but I don't know why he would lead into acidity without talking about PK. I got videos for that, if y'all are interested.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I have a lot of, I have a whole, uh, my channel for organic, I think I have like 90, 85 or 90 videos on there. So, and I definitely have videos for PK and acidity. And they go into detail about the different factors that stabilize conjugate bases too. So if y'all are interested, I can just put the, a link to the channel in the chat box.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me grab it right quick.
Thank you.
I have a bunch of, it's just all kinds of, every topic that that I cover on my own syllabus, I have a video for it. So diapos, everything. All, everything you sent me in the text, Derek, I was like, yeah. I could, I could have just said go to YouTube, but I like this too though. I like the interaction. Uh, let me find, let me go to my page right quick.
Okay, I have a question. This is just for clarification, just for me. So triple bonds will equal sp and that will equals 50%?
Mm-hmm, 50% S, yes.
Okay, double bond equals sp2, 33% and single bond is sp3 and that equals 25%?
Yeah, if that carbon has all single bonds to it, it's sp3-hybridized.
Got you.
And, and it is also gonna have four things around it. And keep in mind, four, a pair of electrons is a thing, right? So that's a group as well. Uh, here we go. Let me see. I, I had a bunch of stuff. I just did a lecture on PK Friday too. I gotta, I'm, I'll post the, the link to that playlist too. Because I, since we've been virtual, I've been recording all my lectures. So let me, let me give you this one. I'm gonna put this in the chat. And then I'll put a link to my, um, I'll put a link to my, uh, my lectures too in the chat from this semester. The last, we started PKA on Wednesday, so the date would have been like 9:00, 9:00 right here. So let me find, uh, let me find that, that playlist. I'll put a link to this playlist also. If you, i- if you go back and watch the, the nine, nine video and the nine eleven video, it'll give, it'll share some more light on that. Alright, so that's, that's two links to two different playlists. Uh, let me see. They sent two more questions. Okay, so it says, let me go back to my iPad. So this is question number nine. It says, consider HOCN after adjusting for the multiple bonds and unbound the pair of electrons. What will the hybridization state of oxygen and nitrogen? Okay. That's not a hard, that's not a, that is gonna, so that question actually is building on a couple of skills. So if you write this HOCN, this is condensed. Right? My suggestion, anytime you have a problem like that, is to write the molecule out. So you will write it like this, and write it in Lewis form and put all the electrons in. So you got a pair of electrons on nitrogen, and you got two pairs of electrons on, two pairs of electrons on oxygen. Following that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so when you look at that molecule, again, you're talking about a hybridization state. SP three is four groups. SP two, uh, SP two atom, not, it's not cuz har- other atoms have hybridization states other than carbon. It's three groups and then SP be two groups. Right? So, and for the oxygen, let me change the color of those, uh, electrons. So for oxygen, that's what it looks like, right? So if you count their electrons, so that's a, that's not a tricky question. It's, it's trying to figure out whether you know how to write out Lewis structures and put nonbonding pairs in and all that stuff. Which you started in GChem and then you should, should have built on in the first part of this class. So for oxygen, you got two long pairs. And you got two single bonds to it, right? So that's a total of four groups around that oxygen. So that oxygen is gonna be SP three hybridized. You following that? If we write it out like it, the, in the proper geometry, right? Those long pairs are actually in P orbital, so they look like that. And then the H will be down here, and then the cyanide will be on this side. So anytime you see a pair of electrons on an atom, always think about it as be sitting in an orbital with a shape. Right? So that you, you'll know to count it as a group. Right? And then it asks for the nitrogen too, right? So for, for, for the nitrogen, it's the same thing. That long pair is sitting in an orbital. So it's pointed out here away from the atom, uh-oh, sorry. Right? And so that nitrogen has a pair of electrons on the right, and then it's triple bonded to a carbon on the left. It doesn't matter how many bonds, right? It's the number of groups. So the nitrogen is gonna be SP hybridized. Right? Cuz it's got a carbon on this side. And a pair of electrons on this side, so it's got two groups on it. Right? So what you don't wanna do is count the number of bonds. Cuz carbon is always gonna have four bonds to it. No matter what its hybridization state, unless it's charged. Right? If it's a carbocation, which is positive, then it's gonna have three bonds to it and a plus charge. If it's a carbana, which is negative, it's gonna have three bonds and a, and a, a long pair, right? So, but, so what you wanna look for is either the number of groups or the types of bonds. Triple bonds, double bonds, so on and so forth. And then I, you put one other question, let me see that. Consider the reaction. Yeah, so he gave, so he snuck y'all a PKA question on the quiz. Let me write it out. PHOH plus NA HCO three. And that, that's PHO minus NA plus, plus NA. I'm sorry. H two CO three, that's right. And it gave you some KA values, right? So KA is one times, is that negative ten? That's hard for me. Yes, one times ten to the negative ten. And then, uh, KA for this is one times ten to the minus time, time, ten to the minus two. Alright? So let's see what the question is asking. This is an acid-base equilibrium question, I believe. I'm gonna put a box here, cuz that's where my arrows are gonna go. It says, consider the reaction below and the KA of the species indicated. What, okay, that's an equilibrium question. Alright, so let me, let me help you to, to understand this. And, and the most basic way possible, alright? Equilibrium is always gonna favor the weaker acid. So whichever side has the weaker acid, that's the side that's gonna be favored. Are you following that?
Yes.
Okay, so KA normally in organic will use PKA. I'm, I can, I can go ahead and give you a little rough uh, idea about PKA. So PKA is the negative law of KA. Right? So KA, that's the equilibrium constant for, uh, acid-base reaction that's spontaneous, like a really super strong acid. So that's why we use PKA in organic, because there's not a lot of acids in organic that readily dissociate when you add them to water. Right? So, but the, the thing about KA, let's just focus on that. If it's a big number, if it's a big number, it's a strong acid. Right? If KA is a small number, then it's a weak acid. Alright? Follow me? So a big, big KA is a strong acid. We, uh, low KA is a weak acid. How many of y'all remember KA from GChem? It's the, it's the, uh, concentration of HA over A minus and then H plus. Right? That's, that's how you calculate that. So a strong acid is gonna have very little of this left, cuz it's gonna be fully, if you think about HA in equilibrium with H plus, plus A minus. Right? If it's a really strong acid, there's gonna be a whole lot of this, cuz it's gonna dissociate to that. And be very little of HA left. If it's a weak acid, it's the opposite. Weak acid, there'll be a whole lot of HA left that's not dissociated into eight, into its ions. Alright, so that's why KA, if it's a big number, that means the, the denominator is a small number. If it's a, KA is a small number, that means the, the denominator is a big number. Alright, so let's go back up here. Which KA is smaller? You got point, so point zero, 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 one. And then point zero, zero, one. Which one of those is the bigger number? And then to check this, we're gonna actually convert those into PKA.
The, the bigger one is the one that's negative two, right?
Yeah, ten to the minus two is a, a larger number, right? So here's, here's my prescription for this, alright? Everybody in here, at some point in your life, has played on the playground. And you sat on a seesaw with somebody bigger than you, and they jumped off. You flew up in the air, it hurt your behind, it hurt a lot of other stuff. The way you determine the equilibrium, again, is always gonna favor the weaker acid. So the equilibrium, in this case, if we put one times ten to the minus ten on that side, right? And then we put, uh, one times ten to the minus two on that side. In KA terms, this is bigger. That means that's the better acid. That's why I like to use PKA, because the numbers are more manageable and they're easier to think about. So this is more, this is one times ten, ten to the minus two. This is one times ten to the minus ten. Can somebody convert this into, uh, PKA by taking a negative log of that? So negative log of one times ten to the minus ten, and then somebody take the negative log of one times ten to the minus two. And that'll make this, make this, that'll make this seesaw analogy make more sense, cuz right now it doesn't. Right now, the seesaw is gonna tilt towards one times ten to the minus ten, even though it's a smaller number, and anybody got it yet? This is K.
Negative log.
Uh-huh, of one times ten to the minus ten, or you can do the log of one over that number. So do one over ten, or one times ten to the negative ten, and then do the log of it. Cuz you could do negative log of KA or a log of one over KA. Both, both of them would work.
For one times ten to the negative ten, I got negative one.
Got negative one?
Yeah, I did it on my Google calculator. I don't have my graphic calculator on hand. That might be wrong.
Yeah, I don't think that's the right, cuz I, the, the reason I know is not the right answer, is because I know that, I actually know the PKA of phenol, I think it's ten. The alcohol. Let's do this. Let's, let's not even do that. Go, somebody Google the PKA of phenol. And then, uh, somebody Google the PKA of, we'll do it that way.
The PKA of phenol is ten.
It's ten, right?
Yes.
And then somebody do, speak, Google the PKA of sodium hydrogen carbonate. You got, what you got?
Ten point three.
Ten point three?
Wait, no, for bicarbonate, for sodium bicarbonate, never mind.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that's a little too low. This one should be a little higher. It should be closer to like fifteen or something like that. Or do sodium, uh, bo- did, did you say sodium carbonate or sodium bicarbonate?
I did, um, I looked up sodium bicarbonate and I got ten point three.
Did it give you a structure?
No, let me go back.
Yeah, see what it, see what the image looks like of that. That might be the right one. I think that is the right one. You said ten point three?
Yes.
Those numbers are way off. This is a trick question. In a sense it is. So phenol is ten and then this is ten point three? And let me see what the answers are. I think one of the answers is toward the center. Cuz the KAs are so different that the PK shouldn't be that close. Something's not right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's my fault. Look up the PKA for carbonic acid. My bad. Cuz that's what the conjugate acid is.
It's six point three five.
Good, nah, that I can deal with. I can, I can live with that. Six point three five. Alright, so when you compare like those two PKAs, so the, the KA is not, is not, is counterintuitive. But the weaker acid is phenol. You can see that because the KA is smaller, right? But if you put the PKAs, this, that's why I always like to use PKA. You put the PKAs on a on a seesaw, which way is that seesaw gonna go? Towards ten or toward, which number is bigger?
One, ten.
Ten, right? So you're, it's gonna tilt in that direction. Right? And so with that being said, that, that's, that's a very telling thing that when you are trying to determine acid-base equilibrium, the weaker acid is always favored. Right? So the weaker acid is gonna be the acid with a higher PKA and a lower KA. Cuz PKA and KA are like inversely proportional, right? So we go back up here. Which, so the side that's gonna be favored is the, is the reacting side, the left side. So you would draw your equil- equilibrium arrows like this, right? Where the left side is favored and the right side is not favored. So it would be, where is it? Towards the, towards the left.
Wait, why is it towards the left again?
Alright, so the, the acid on the left side is the phenol, right? And it has a PKA of one times, or, or KA of one times ten to the minus ten, right? And then, so that means it's a really weak acid. You following? And so, the, as, the conjugate acid, which is here, cuz that's what, when you're doing acid-base equilibrium, that's what you're comparing. The acid that you start with and the conjugate acid that you produce. So the, the conjugate acid has a KA of one times ten to the minus two, which is a bigger number. Which means it's a stronger acid. Are you following? So if you, if you, the, the, um, equilibrium is always gonna fa- is always gonna move towards the weaker acid. So you wanna go from a strong acid to a weak acid. Right? And not, not the other way around. So if you ma- if you go from a weak acid to a strong acid, let, let me back up. What is an acid? A brusde acid. What does it do?
An acid, um, it loses protons and everything?
It loses H plus, right? Or protons. So a weak acid loses protons slower than a strong acid. Right? So if you're going from a weak acid to a strong acid, and it's an equilibrium, every time you give up a proton from the weak acid, you're giving up, in this case, uh, about ten thousand protons from the strong acid pushing it back the other way.
Okay.
You following that? You following that? So you don't, you don't wanna go from a, a weak acid to a strong, cause if it go, when, once you make the stronger acid, it's just gonna give up its H plus and go back the other way. So that's why the, the reactants are gonna be favored in this case.
Okay.
Let's see. Alright, does that answer, is, is everybody okay with that? So I guess the key to this question is to understand what K A means. K A is a measure of acidity. And if it's a, the larger the number is, the more acidic a compound is gonna be, acid is gonna be. The smaller it is, the less acidic it's gonna be. And when you're trying to determine equilibrium, you always wanna favor the weaker acid.
Okay, I got that, so.
So the seesaw, if you're using K A, the seesaw analogy won't work. If you're using PKA, it'll work. But the, so let me, let me erase this, cause this won't work if you're using K A. Cause, oh, you'll have to violate some mathematical rules to make it work and I don't wanna do that. But if you use PKA, it definitely works. And since y'all haven't learned in how to, uh, go back and forth between PKA and K A, just know that a, a big, a bigger K A means that the acid is stronger. And a smaller K A means that the acid is weaker. You always want it, your equilibrium is always gonna favor that weaker side.
Okay, that makes much more sense now.
Alright.
Okay, a question.
Go ahead.
How would you recommend that you study for your class? Like, how do you study for organic chemistry? Like, I understand functional groups, a flash card.
Mm-hmm.
But like, like hybridization, acidity, stuff like that, how do?
So for acidity, most of the times, if you're doing organic acids, you wanna under, you wanna, first thing, the, the first thing I would understand is what happens in the acid-base reaction. Right? So when the base removes the proton from a acid, what do you get on the other side? If you understand that part, then you understand that all acidity is based on the formation of that conjugate base on the other side of the arrow. And then once you understand that, then you can start adding in the other layers about, okay, if I know the conjugate base is what I care about, how do I know how good a conjugate base is or how bad it is? And that's where those other five factors come. That's just memorization of those five factors and how to apply them. Right? If you're doing hybridization, what you're looking for is the number of groups attached to the atom. A, a atom with three groups is gonna be sp two. If it's got two groups, it's gonna be sp. If it's got four groups, it's gonna be sp three. Right? So it's like, there's a, a whole bunch of different little techniques you can, you can employ to kinda make the stuff relatable. Yeah, so for hybridization, I would look at the number of groups on the atom. For acidity, I'm all, I'm thinking immediately about the conjugate base, especially if I don't have numbers. If I got numbers, then that's different. I just need to memorize what the rule is. Low PKA, strong acid. High PKA, weak acid. Lo- low K A, weak acid. High K A, strong acid. So I just need to memorize that. If I got numbers, if I don't have numbers, then I'm back to looking at the conjugate base. So yeah, it, that, there's some techniques you can use. And my thing is just, the more you see it, the better you're gonna get at it. So do lots of reps. Work practice problems. Don't wait for the teacher to tell you what problems to do. If, if there's problems in the syllabus or in the chapter, in the section you read, work. The more you see it, the better you're gonna become, the more adept you're gonna become at recognizing what a particular question is asking. That's the key to any, any class, especially a chemistry class, is deciphering what a question is asking for. Alright, any other questions?